Let's call the meeting to order. This meeting is being recorded, seeing no one else recording the meeting. If you'd please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. We do have some special recognitions this evening, and I'll pass it over to Dr. Brunel for that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So first, just to let you know, Sidney Mercadanty, our Project 351 ambassador, will actually come on March 6th at our next meeting. But it is my pleasure to introduce to you Delia Shea. She is a freshman at Auburn High School, and she would like to share with you a campaign that she is running and share it with our audience, too.
This is a video PSA that we made for Toy Drive. A freshman at Auburn High School, and when I was four and a half years old, I was diagnosed with a coarctation of the aorta, meaning that one of the tubes running from my heart was closed up, so they had to perform surgery at Boston Children's Hospital. I was there for about a week, and I don't remember much, but one of the things I do remember is choosing a toy from the treasure chest that the nurse would bring around to all the rooms. And it was basically just a box that was filled with a bunch of toys, and each patient got to pick out a toy. And I remember it made me super happy, and it makes a bunch of patients happy to this day. So I wanted to give back to the hospital, say thank you. Any toys you are willing to donate must be new and unused. We do accept gift cards, but we cannot unfortunately accept any money donations. Other unacceptable toys include small toys, as children may choke on them, and homemade cloth. Toys will be donated to home bases. The drive will start February 1st and end February 28th. All toys are brought directly to the floors of the hospital as soon as they arrive, so please try your hardest to donate. It all goes towards a great cause. Auburn High School and middle school, I'm reaching out to you to help you support this cause. Thank you. Yeah, so basically, that's my Toy Drive. And I started this two years ago, and ever since then, it's been a huge success, and I've already gotten a lot of support for it. And I'm really excited to start again, and I'm hoping to get more than we got last year, which was 700 toys. So that's my goal, and yeah. Thank you.
Excellent. Well, you could stay up there if you'd like. We may have a question or two for you, I'm sure. Any questions for Delia?
Yeah. Thank you, first of all, for doing this. And what age range are we looking for for the toys?
It can be any age range, but they posted something recently on their website saying that a lot of teenagers and very, very young kids, so like newborns and very young children don't get a lot of toys. So I want, I'm, when people ask me what toys they should bring in, I often say those people because they don't get a lot, but it can really be any.
Any other comments or questions?
And if we were to buy a toy, is there a school we can bring them to, or?
High school.
High school?
Yeah, high school and middle school's also running it.
Okay.
Is there a website we can look up to get info?
I don't think, we can go to the Boston Children's website, and there's a whole list of all the acceptable toys and, yeah.
Now, when you deliver the toys, do you go out there personally, and do you bring some of your friends with you?
Yes, that's what we've been doing for the past two years. Usually it's me, a few teachers, the principal, we all go up there and donate the toys.
That's excellent.
Yeah, it's a lot of fun.
It's very nice of you to do that.
It is.
Thank you.
If we had more students or more young adults like yourself, the world would be a great place.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions for Delia?
Great job.
Yeah, thank you for what you're doing. I'm sure the kids love it.
And what are you at right now? Do you know how many toys as of right now?
Well, it just started recently. It started a little bit late, so we don't have an exact count, but I know a lot of people are planning on bringing the toys.
And you're doing this through the end of the month, or?
Yes, I think so, but it might go a little longer. We'll see.
Well, keep us posted. It's great work that you're doing, and much appreciated, and as a committee, you make us very proud.
Thank you.
Dr. Brunel, do you have anything?
Just a great job, and just a shiny example of the nice children that we have in school. For you to be able to give back for something so personal to you, I think is wonderful. And I know Rocket One, I think, was used last year, right, to the van to drive everyone down and donate the toys. So I know even the staff said what a great feeling it was, and kudos to you.
Thank you.
Excellent. Great job pulling everyone together.
Thank you.
And as much as we'd like to stay.
You have toys to collect, right?
I have toys to collect. I gotta go.
Thank you. Have a nice day.
Good luck. Yeah, keep us posted.
Thank you.
That's great. Okay, moving along.
So just wanted to share with you, the We the People team made us extremely proud again this year. As you know, I was not able to go. Mr. Hanfield was. And as he had put out to people that day, although DC was not in the cards for them this year, the students just handled themselves as they have each year with just poise and professionalism and a great deal of respect. So huge kudos to them for their preparation. Also, some exciting news to share. We learned that three teachers at Auburn High School, Ms. Senior and Mrs. Philbin, both English teachers, and Mrs. Ballway, a chemistry teacher, have been named to receive a Mass Insight Education and Research Partners in Excellence Teacher Award. And that's for their exemplary work in the STEM and English program with our Advanced Placement work. So there is going to be a recognition dinner in mid-April for them at Holy Cross, bless you. And each of them at that dinner will be presented with a plaque and a $750 check, and this will be at the Seventh Annual Partners in Excellence Award. So congratulations to the teachers for doing that. Also, I wanted to share with you that artwork from over 300 students in grades K to 12 are going to be recognized at the Worcester Art Museum's Youth Art Show. So I want to give congratulations to those students. It'll, it's actually children from Auburn High and Swanson Road who'll be featured in the show. It's open to the public. There's a family reception on March 3rd, and congratulations to the student artists for a great job. And then finally, I wanted to let you know that Mrs. Worsbicki, our business manager, recently earned her MCPPO certification, which stands for Massachusetts Certified Public Purchasing Officer Certification. So it was quite a bit of time put in for her, so I wanted to give her her recognition as well.
Even our administration.
That's great.
Exactly.
Congratulations.
Too bad she wasn't here to accept the congratulations.
Exactly. I will pass those along.
Get her next time. Tell her that we missed our favorite part of the evening, all of that. Seeing no citizens to comment, we're going to move right on to Ryan with the Student Representatives Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So first off, I'll start with the list of things Ally gave me. It was pretty extensive that she wanted me to cover, so.
One question.
Yep.
Now, because she's like this karate master, she's strong-arming you into doing all these meetings, so how does that work?
I know.
Don't tell her that. She's strong-arming me.
This isn't done just on fair alone, is it? All right, go ahead. I'm sorry.
It's fine to worry. So first off, she wanted me to tell you Rockets to Rockets will be attending a buddy dance on March 1st at Algonquin, and that's going to be a semi-formal for the entire club. And also, they had great success selling carnations for Valentine's Day last week. Also, NHS is in the process for getting their new inductees for their March 28th induction. If I'm not mistaken, this staff council, teacher council, actually met today to confirm who's getting on. And then some comments she wanted me to share on the February break. Although we had a shortened February break, and at first, it was kind of painful, it is nice to allow us to have greater opportunities, such as the extended weekend in March for the Disney and Utah trips for band and ski club.
Okay, that's positive.
And for the stuff I'm covering, math team is having their next, or their last competition next week. Quiz show had their third competition sometime in January, I forget the exact date. We won both those, and our final one is coming up. We don't have a date for that yet. And Mollion has two more conferences left, one in mid-March and one in early April. And finally, to go into our break, we had a spirit week last week that closed with Winter Carnival, which was fun, having the teaser of Mr. Auburn and all the games. The seniors did not win volleyball, but the teachers did crush the juniors.
Wow. Exciting stuff. Well, thank you for that report. Any questions for Ryan, any comments? No? Great report as usual.
Thank you.
I just questioned, you know, whether or not you're being strong-armed, that's all. Got to talk with Ally.
I bet he could stand up for himself.
I don't know if I would mess with Ally.
I know she's going to see this, right?
Ryan, that's a great report. As always, you're welcome to take off if you'd like.
I actually have a meeting right now, so.
Thank you.
A meeting?
Yeah.
All right, have a nice night.
Thank you.
Thank you. He's a great kid.
Yes.
I would now seek approval of the minutes for January 23rd.
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that is a vote. And we move on to the Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So Mr. Hanfield is here in attendance. As he has done, he and his team have reviewed through the program of studies, and in your pack is a summary of the anticipated changes, and we seek your approval for those.
I would entertain that motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the program of studies for Auburn High School for the 2019-2020 school.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Are you going to present?
Excuse me?
Is he going to present?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
We just thought it'd be the other way around.
Oh, no, I mean, we can watch the presentation, but.
Okay, so there's really not a presentation?
Okay.
It's really just a couple of quick highlights.
We're going to Dennyham now, so.
But just as you've, I'm sure you've looked at this extensively, there's been some, just some operational changes as listed here. The two big additions this year are, next year, we'll be offering an Introduction to Business course for students. That'll be a survey of finance, marketing, and overall business practices. That is going to be the first course in what will become a business sequence, hopefully in the next couple of three years. So we're excited about that. And we're really excited about adding Unified Physical Education to our program of studies. Unified Physical Education, as you know, we've had great success with our Unified Sports Program. And what we've done is taken physical education, and we've actually created a section that's co-taught. So we'll have a section of co-taught physical education in our building. So we're excited about that. Our accreditation statement was just added as the last page to the book, and we expect, we still don't have the draft report yet, but we expect it should be coming in the next few weeks. And then we'll be responding to that. So that's really it. There's not too, too much this year. We have enough going on.
Well, that may have built a case for you. I don't know. This may pass after all. Any questions or comments from Mr. Hanfield?
Sounds good.
I really liked the Unified Physical Education.
Yeah, we're excited at it. You know, we really, we've had such a great, it's been such a great momentum builder for us at the school to get involved, and it was just awesome. And then we've just had some of our kids go to Washington, to San Diego, to attend some of the national conferences.
Wow.
And if they're not on the agenda, maybe later in the spring, we can bring them in because the story's just phenomenal, the experiences these kids have had, really just future leaders of our country. So really, really excited about that. And then this just seemed like the next logical progression, you know, to kind of just keep that among the student body's consciousness, you know? Because if you're an athlete, you might be paying attention to it, you might not be. But physical education is something that touches all of our kids through the four years. So we're really excited about extending that commitment, you know, next year.
Excellent.
I noticed some of the news stations have been picking up stories about some of the children in Unified Sports that are doing things.
Yeah, it's interesting. After, yeah, after our, you know, kind of success in being named a top school, all of the schools started springing up. They wanted to know more about the program, how can we get involved? And so it's really taking off across the state. So what's been really awesome for us is really being an awesome experience for other schools, you know, as well. So it's good things, good things going on.
Yeah, it's great, great to be out front with that.
I agree.
Any other comments or questions, Mr. Hanfield? No? No, the program of studies looks great, and your presentation, non-presentation is great also, and I think it really swayed the committee.
I'm always happy to present. You just have to tell me ahead of time, but sometimes brevity is key, as someone very wise once told me so.
So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that is a vote.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So the next item on the agenda is the school calendar for next year. As I do annually, I put together a draft, but obviously want to hear any thoughts or ideas or suggestions that you may have.
Any comments or questions regarding the school calendar? Ms. Harrington?
Just a few concerns were brought up. I would like to see more data, maybe another survey or something, all the teachers and staff, I mean, the staff and the parents.
Okay.
Concerns from?
About February break being shortened. I think, when was our last survey done?
I believe it was in '15 that we did it. The original one, I think, was done in '14, around this time of year, in anticipation of the '14-'15 school year that we needed that long summer. And then the year after, thanks, Mr. Hanfield.
I think you.
The year after, we did one in '15 in anticipation of the '15-'16 school year, but we've not done one since.
I heard from people today on this, and I was reading through the agenda, and I didn't see it on the agenda, so I'm like, oh, yeah, it's on the agenda tonight, oh, okay. Teachers are saying that they're not happy with it. Now, of course, this is the group that's talking to me. Part of it is if they live in another town, if they want to do something with their children in March, they have to take them out of school because the two don't coincide, and most of the districts are still on the February vacation. They also just felt that with everything going on and no snow days, they needed a And just generally, I think they'd like to be polled again. I also heard from a student at the high school who's doing a, collecting student signatures today, asking for going back to February vacation.
It would be interesting, sorry, through the chair, about the students' perspective, at least at the high school, as well, I mean, for this, because I've heard some stuff as well.
Yeah. I mean, it's hard when you're different from everybody else, and there's things going on that you can't take part in. I mean, I didn't have to have that problem when I was teaching because we had the February vacation. And I mean, we did ski trips and things with other families and things like that, which you couldn't do now.
Through the chair, I think it started out very practical when we were merging schools, but I hear more and more of families wanting to go to warmer destinations.
And I also understand like 10% of the high school kids were absent today because the parents had just taken the kids out of school anyhow, which parents, of course, can do.
That's more data I'd like to see is absentee rates this week.
Sure.
And maybe how, how well the students are maybe even performing this week, you know? Is it a week that they're just there, or are they performing?
Sure.
And I'll, on my side, from a medical perspective, I'm going to try to find some research, which I don't know if there is much, because I know that a lot of schools still do the February break, but, you know, I think about infection control pieces in February, sick children. I got a call from the nurse today. Luckily, it was car sickness, but are there increased risks?
Well, I used to see when I was teaching, we'd have a big absentee rate with common illnesses going through your classes, and it'd be like, oh, good, thank goodness the vacation's coming up, and that would be enough to break it. And then when you did get back from vacation, you had almost your full attendance. So it gave that illness time to break and give the students time to get away from each other, so.
Through the chair, I will only say that I've actually gotten positive feedback only because some of the, for some of the working parents that just are fighting with other parents trying to get a whole week off in February, so that working pool, you were fighting with every other district in the area to get that off. So just from what I've heard, it seems like it's a little bit easier to manage your time off. So, you know, where the majority falls, I mean, I'm not really sure, but I do certainly agree with just doing another poll to see, to see how that fits. Because I know, you know, we tried, we tried to just take this week off, and I was denied. So, sorry, you were the tenth in line to ask for this, so.
On that note, yeah, and I think we need to be respectful of the vote that we took four and a half years ago, which I think overwhelmingly had parents in agreement with the abbreviated February vacation. So we need to have mutual respect for our teachers, which we obviously do, but we also need to bring parents into the fold.
Absolutely.
And, I mean, they are, they are the ones four and a half years ago, or five years ago, whatever it is now, that, that built the new middle school for us. And they are the ones that, that help us to pay teacher salaries and to make sure that our students have the best of everything. As taxpayers, I think they need to have a voice. To what extent those numbers work, I don't know, but we do need to involve them, and we need to respect the decision that was made four and a half years ago. But we're current with every other sort of data, so why not be current with this? Why not take another look at it? Regarding the student survey, student petition, we have some of the best students, no doubt about it, but I would not put the hands of our vacations or school calendar into the care of students because we may end up only going to school for, you know, 50 or 60 days per year, according to whatever their ideas might be.
But it doesn't hurt to ask them.
No, it doesn't hurt to get a little bit of feedback from them. And I think we've all gotten a little bit of feedback today. Myself, I'm more in line with Ms. Kaufman. Some of the feedback that, that I had received was, I'm fine with the vacation the way it is. The concern being, trying to compare it to other districts, why are they getting out similar time as we are in June? And we have the abbreviated February vacation, and they have the full vacation. So that's some of the data or scheduling calendars I'd like to have a look at from, from other districts. But, yeah, I think we need to keep an open mind. And again, we don't want to disrespect parents, teachers, or even the students. We need to, we need to do this together, but we need to have accurate data. We can't just, it just can't be, well, I heard from this person, or I heard from this one, or I talked to this many teachers. It just can't be that. It's got to be accurate, so we'll, I guess we'll come up with a devise a plan where we can, over the next few weeks.
Collaborative data, I would agree with. Let's just go down that.
So through the chair, just so unclear, so I will put together a draft and return at the next meeting with a draft survey for you that I'm hearing. We would be surveying teachers, but all staff within the district.
Yep.
Parents and students at the high school only.
Yeah. I mean, if they've gone to the trouble of doing a student petition, I think we should respect them and listen, ask, ask their opinion.
Through the chair, can I ask one other thing, just if we're going to be getting information? At least in my household, what they're doing at the middle school this week in the abbreviated week has gone over extremely well with mine and all the kids at their bus stop. And so I'd be interested, but I have no insight into what they're doing at that high school for this week. So at the middle school, they're having winter festivities.
And I understand Swanson is also, but the high school is business as usual because of the importance of their curriculum.
And so perhaps, even if that is included in the survey that we give to the students, and, you know, would it make it better if XYZ was done, or how do you feel about this?
Of course, on the other hand, if you're thinking of taking your kids out, why not? If that's what's going on in the schools, that certainly doesn't give a parent an incentive to keep their kid in school if they would prefer.
Sure.
I can speak to, through the chair, at Swanson today. Dr. Lusay and I had the opportunity to go, and they were doing, they were calling it a mind in your mind day, so they had activities throughout the school the kids were involved in, and they had coordinated, they had a, they had a sub-community who had put it together. They were individuals, some who lived in the community, some were parents, but vendors that came in and taught Tai Chi and some relaxation techniques and yoga, mindfulness and decorating cookies and things. So it was, it was a nice day.
Through the chair, Caitlin, my daughter, and she's in third grade, and had, she had the best day. She came home with a homemade scarf and does yoga now and is all into her.
Self-help skills.
And through the chair, I was told that we're hoping that there won't be a two-hour delay tomorrow because they don't want to miss.
That's right.
Winter festivities. So to me, that's, whatever we're doing is a good thing.
Are you logging our superintendent?
No, no, I'm just saying, I'm, to hear that in my household, you know, that's not a thing that we usually hear.
No, I know, just saying.
That positive feedback is another thing that, that we need to take into consideration. Some of the fun that these youngsters were having when they got back to school today, or getting back into the swing of things and not losing whatever they had picked up in previous weeks or after the long vacation, or had we had all of these snow days, we do need to keep them on track. The other thing is not all of these, not, not all of our students in town are going on vacations. They're not going to Florida, they're not going to the mountain skiing. A lot of these, a lot of these kids are going to be sitting home in grandma's house, stuck in the house all day. It's not, not everyone is going on vacation. As you said, not everyone can get time off from their, their jobs. That's why we need to be mindful of what the, what the parents' needs are. I think school is, is a positive place to be, and I'm not, this isn't my decision, I'm not swaying one way or the other. I'm saying, let the survey tell the story, but school is a positive place. Home, doing nothing, playing video games is not always a positive place, and you don't always have the, the parents there to make sure that their kids are able to get out and do things or take them places.
And meals.
Yeah.
And heat.
That, too.
Yeah.
I think we have an accurate feed.
We do.
The only thing I would say, actually, we could follow up later, just regarding the...
I have a question, though, Mr. Chair. Do we know surrounding districts? Is anyone else doing this?
We do. So Southern Weston County Collaborative has this identical schedule to us. I believe Sutton has the same, and Quabog. Quabog might have done a bit of a variation. They may have Friday off, and I'm not sure if they had Tuesday off. So I did poll the local schools. Some had gone to that. Oxford had recently gone to it when they had an interim, and then they went, they chose to go back to it. So, so there were not many that have done it, but those four I do know have done this stuff.
I mean, when my kid is at dance and I'm talking to the other mothers about our schedule, we're like, the envy of, you know, the parents think it's great, no one can afford flights right now for this week. So, I mean, there's, I can see it both ways, but I think, yeah, we do need to at least reach out and get some feedback.
Sure, absolutely.
I think what I wanted to, what I wanted to say before we close out is, when we're taking into consideration student opinions or student data that we might receive from a survey from them, I'm more concerned about the whos, whats, and the whys. I don't really want that data or those numbers to be a part of the parent and teacher data.
Oh, no, I would separate it through the chair. Yes.
Just looking for their opinions or why, or why they may not want to be in school. And as someone who teaches at a high school, I can just think of many crazy reasons why they might be putting down to get some extra time off.
It's also a good way, though, through the chair, and to show them that we do respect their thoughts, even though, you know, I agree, it has to be.
We have to take what we're given, so.
Yeah.
Because you're right, but through the chair, it might just be an idea of, maybe they need an extra week to catch up on whatever they're, maybe they need, like, I guess, the equivalent of kind of in-house study halls, but to catch up on projects with, you know, there might be some need that the high schoolers have that if they have to be there, they, they would get more out of, we want to approach versus the other if they're going to be in school.
I'm thinking like AP students at the high school, you know, do they have a lot of test projects? All those things that they can catch up on during that time.
As Ryan was saying earlier, it was, it was tough going back, but once you get into the swing of things, him and all of his classmates were happy to be there.
Yeah.
And I think those are some of the students that we're talking about, is, is the AP students. But again, we need to be respectful of all the students, all of the faculty, and.
And the parents.
They need to, and parents, and, and they need to be respectful of our decisions or our data gathering as well. There's a, there's a, a, a good way to go about this and there's a bad way to go about this. And neither of us should be trying to strong on the other, so that's just my opinion.
And will these results be made public? That's a question.
Sure. Through the chair, I, I think the, the last time, so the, the first survey that we did was basically saying we need a long summer.
Yeah.
It's either going to be February, April, and it was clear, people did not want April taken away or abbreviated in any way. And then the following year, I, I know that I, I would assume I shared it, it was five years ago now, with everybody. I remember sharing it with, with the P staff and things, but I think I shared it with everybody. I think, but we certainly will do that, yes.
Great, well, we look forward to that.
Great.
And encourage people to participate.
Definitely.
When that survey does come out.
Definitely.
Okay, moving along.
So the next item, the master plan, the town is actually in the process of updating their master plan document that was decades old. So in this, I just wanted to share it with you, I've submitted this. Mark Imzy actually is a representative, he was school building committee chair, is serving on it. And we did quite a bit of work, and I thank Mr. Fahy too, for his support in this of updating it, really trying to paint a picture of, so what's the current state? And it was really around buildings and, and space. What's the current state, what difficulties or challenges do we have? And what might be some potential future expansion? So looking ahead to what might we need down the road? And I really focused on, and I thank Dr. Lozay for this too, we really focused on our early childhood programming. You know, it was just seven short years ago that we actually went to full-day kindergarten programming. And the research, you know, continues to come out on the importance of even pre-kindergarten. We've expanded our preschool program. We had two classrooms for probably the first five or six years I was here. We now have seven different sections of classes that are offered to kids, three and four-year-old, full-day, half-day options as well by five teachers. I'm sorry, I don't want to misrepresent, five teachers. So if we were to eventually move forward with full programming for our preschool students, four-year-olds and then three, we would need an addition on a building, as this indicates here. But one of the things, when I read the original master plan document, it made mention in the air of several times suggesting that an enrollment projection study be done so you can know what we're looking at down the road. And I know that that had come up a year or two ago. But as we put this document together, which is really trying to guide, you know, ten, twelve years into the future, I do think it makes sense for us to do that. So as I noted in here, you know, if you agree with that, I would, with your vote, I would seek some bids on having an enrollment projection done so we know what we're looking for. Our numbers have increased over the past few years, which is unique to, to neighboring districts, quite honestly. But I think it would be important to see what it looks like down the road.
I would entertain that motion.
Make a motion to authorize the superintendent the solicit bids to conduct an enrollment projection to help determine future enrollment that may impact space and other needs.
Second.
Any discussion?
Good question. How does that process work?
So typically, NASDAQ is an organization, the New England Department of Schools and Colleges. So they come in and similar to what MSBA actually did when we were, needed to agree on a number of what we'd build the middle school for. So they, it's a statistical analysis looking at the number of recent births. They look at housing development, how many, at least MSBA did, looked at housing development, how many builders had put in plans to build homes and things. They look at open space issues and things. I would have to believe, because I, we definitely saw an uptick with the new middle school being built, that, I mean, Auburn is, continues to be a very hot real estate market right now. So they have a variety of factors that they look at and then make a projection, you know, out about ten, and it could even go as high as fifteen years, but at least ten years out.
Good.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comments or questions?
I think it's a great idea.
Yeah.
Yeah, definitely, we need to stay ahead of that. And it's, it's obvious that new home buyers are moving into town with younger children. And I think that's, that, that has a lot to do with what's going on here, between the new buildings and, and the school system itself.
Yeah.
And I actually heard someone complaining about town services the other day. And, and they said, and, and, you know, what do we get for the money in mediocre schools? And I'm thinking, well, try to.
They don't live in Auburn.
Try to bid on a house the, the day that it comes out because you're probably going to lose it because someone's moving in there with young children to get themselves into the Auburn schools.
Yeah, they're great schools.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote.
George, did we just skip over the school calendar vote? I don't know that we're just going to leave it for now or?
No, we didn't vote, we just pushed it off so that we could collect some more data.
Okay.
Thank you, though.
So just wanted to, as you're aware, Governor Baker's House One budget that he submitted, in just this, I, I put a link in there for you. We had received some information from the Department of Ed. As you know, Auburn is slated in Governor Baker's budget to receive an increase of $770,964 in Chapter Seventy. We remain hopeful that perhaps the House and Senate numbers may even improve beyond that, but we're grateful for what we've received to date. To that end, I did send letters to Senator Warren, Representative Frost, both of whom have been very responsive in the past. And this is an initiative that superintendents across the Commonwealth continue to really support, and that's full funding for the Circuit Breaker. So that is for our most special students in the, who require some pretty substantial significant services for reimbursement, that it is supposed to be up to seventy-five percent. To my knowledge, it has never been funded at that level. I think one year, many years ago, it was up to seventy-two percent, but it could be as low as sixty or sixty-two percent as well. So we advocate for them, as they contemplate their budget, to put full funding for Circuit Breaker because that would truly impact districts. Every district across the Commonwealth has students whose needs demand more.
And I would like to add in support of that, you can have a student move into a district after your budget's formed and they need all kinds of expensive services, which as a district you have to deliver, which is why we do have some money set aside now. But I mean, I saw the, the bad end of it where students that had been here couldn't get the services they needed. And I just felt like if someone's going to move in with that much need, why isn't the state paying for them? Because as they move from district to district to district, wherever they go, some district is hurt or their students are hurt. To me, it, they're, it should be covered by the state completely.
Moving on.
So the next item, we've shared in here the Assamet Valley Collaborative. It's their actual annual report for 2018. And I would ask that you accept it so that they can report that to the state.
I would entertain that motion.
Make a motion to accept the FY 2018 annual report for the Assamet Valley Collaborative.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote.
Thank you. And then likewise, the second quarter report for the Southern Western County Educational Collaborative, to likewise accept that.
I would entertain that motion.
Make a motion to accept S W C E C's second quarter report for the period of October to December of 2018.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote.
And then finally, with sincere appreciation to the Auburn Police Department, they had upgraded some of their radios and then turned over and gave us the excess ones for use in our schools. And we do use them throughout our schools as a safety measure. So I wanted to note that and have you accept them with gratitude, and I will send a thank you.
I would entertain that motion.
Make a motion to accept with gratitude the donation of excess radios from the Auburn Police Department.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Just a question, are these like walkie-talkie type radios that people can use to go back and forth?
Through the chair, yes, on a much more sophisticated level. But yes, they are exactly those, have a great range.
I wondered what kind of radios we were getting.
That kind, yeah.
Those big ones.
Little boxes.
Yeah, sorry, I should have been more clear, through the chair.
Well, every kid needs one of those.
That's true, yeah.
Just like to say, I'm thankful for the, our ongoing relationship with Chief Lucas and, and all of his guys. They're, they're great and it's great having them be a part of our school system.
Agreed.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote. And we now move on to unfinished business.
So included in your packet, as we regularly do, we meet as a leadership team to discuss needs that, that change. We did meet with Town Manager Jacobson and CFO Kazanovich. That was with Mrs. Worsbicky, Dr. Lozay and I. And as we met as a leadership team, what we always try to do is preserve staff, staff currently in place and new staff that we have made the case to you as school committee to support it, and you generously have done so. So as you note on here, what we have done is looked at some potential reductions that can be made or shifting of items. I would draw your attention down to the lower fourth of this with regards to additions needed. The first thing I'm recommending that we increase the translations line by $5,000. We have a growing population of English learners in the district, and the law requires us to offer, if a family chooses in their native language to provide documents in that language, and even if like a student has special needs, their IEP be translated. We have translators that are at meetings and also for progress reports. So we are going to need some additional money there. Secondly, we have a student who was recently identified and will be attending a collaborative program. And while I won't be certain if that student will need to remain at the program next year, we need to be prepared and to budget for it because that would not be able to come out of the special ed stabilization because that can only be unanticipated and unbudgeted. And then lastly, we have a child who will be joining the preschool later in March, early April, and will require, due to physical challenges, will require an LPN to be with the child. So those are additions that we're going to need to make to next year's budget. In terms of cuts, we always look to some supply lines and things, a minor cut in the textbooks. The transportation, if you remember, you had approved, Mrs. Worsbicky, extending the contract for two years. And because of that, this was money we had built in for a potential increase. We're comfortable in reducing that. And what we had built in for retirement, we had a couple of recisions that are not going to retire, they changed their mind. So I'm very comfortable recommending this change to you. It would be a reduction of $184,000, but an increase of $82,000 for a net reduction of $102,706, which would represent a 4.2% increase. But I will tell you, as, when we talked about it just this afternoon, again, as a leadership team, the staff that we're going to be adding, the grade five teacher, we'll have the grade three teacher go over from Swiss, the permanent sub that will be shared, three ABAs, an EL tutor and two social emotional support professionals is really the top priority. So we're very comfortable with this and I recommend it to you for updating.
I would entertain that motion.
Make a motion to approve the revised FY 20 budget.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Through the chair, I actually have a question. Dr. Renal, I'm a little bit concerned about the reduction in the classroom supplies budget, only because what we often hear is that teachers that don't have, they will always go out and buy with enough out of their own budget. Are these, was this just a number, kind of, do we have specific things in mind that align with each of these numbers? Or is it kind of going to be taken across the top from each of the teachers?
So through the chair, this would really be divided up by principals as they see fit. What I will share with you is one thing that we often try to do, if we're able to in the spring of the school year, is to purchase the copy paper that will be needed for next year. And that could actually equate to this value here.
Okay.
So it really, it has a minimal impact, I would say to you.
Okay.
I would say, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Can I have another question? It's just something they don't understand. If the governor is supposedly going to offer us 4.1% extra and our budget increases 4.2%, is that increase going to be offset by what the governor is offering us? Or does some of that money go to the town or, I don't quite understand all this.
So through the chair, the governor's overall Chapter Seventy-eight increase was 4.1%. That was statewide, that wasn't necessarily ours. We got it significantly higher, our increase. So many districts receive $20 per student. We received an increase of $770,000. So actually, later in the meeting, my recommendation is going to be to delay our public hearing until April 3rd, if you're in agreement with that, hoping that the House or Senate come out with some budget numbers that give us a better sense of where we may actually end up. This is, at this point in time, what we feel very comfortable with. So with the 4.2% increase, if we were to take the $770,000 that we bought, so it's actually an increase of slightly more than a million dollars, so it's an increase. I don't have it here, I'm sorry. So it's, it's an increase of slightly, oh, $1,084,000. We, if you take off the $770,000 that we received in Chapter Seventy, is still a difference in there of about $320,000. So the town is still putting additional money in.
They are.
They are, absolutely.
Okay.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you, thank you for explaining that.
Good question, Bill. Any other questions or comments?
Through the chair, under classroom supplies, athletics, oh, well, I guess, never mind, I'm, I'm reading it wrong. I'm just seeing some are significantly higher than others, but.
So through the chair, one of the reasons for that is we were actually, one of the things that comes out for supplies, for athletics, is uniforms. And we were actually able to make a purchase of the, and I'm going to forget if they were the home or the away, baseball uniforms this year, so they'll actually be in for this season.
Excellent.
Sorry to purchase, great.
Yep.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote. And we now move on to new business.
So we recently met last week. It was Mr. Fahy, Eric Moore from Limer Pagano, Mrs. Worsbicky, Mr. Desto and myself with Barbara Hansberry from the MSBA. So I know that we had shared with you that they had come out and wanted to look at the new middle school. And while they were there, they had mentioned to us, you know, we'd really like you to be a part of the story of a building program, which we didn't know what it entailed. So she came out and met with us last week. And there's actually going to be some individuals from across the state, business managers, potentially superintendents, school building committee members, who are in the early stages of potentially building. And they want to use the example of Auburn Middle School for us to actually share with them some of the challenges that we had with our HVAC system and that how when we worked together with the team, we had, we had Limer Pagano, Skanska and Fontaine Brothers with the in-district staff and the weekly meetings that we held, you know, absolutely every week forever, it felt like, and that we wouldn't sign off because we wanted to protect the taxpayers in Auburn until we had a building that we felt was good. We have a building right now that we feel is good. So they're going to be featuring the Auburn Middle School project. And from my perspective, anytime we have people from across the state come and spend time at our schools and feature us, I think it's a good thing, it's a positive ripple effect across the district. So it's going to be some work putting in. The plan is right now to have it happen on May 1st, and I'll keep you apprised, but we're excited for them to be featuring us, so.
Good.
That's great, yeah, that's definitely an honor. I would just say that, that hiccup or that bump in the road with the, the heating and HVAC systems, that's actually quite prevalent in other school building projects. At least a half dozen that I know of, so I don't know if it's that we just don't have enough qualified people out there to install these programs or to run these programs. I know, I know that's not the problem here, running a program. It was actually part of the installation process and the equipment, or not overseeing the equipment properly, but we're not alone by any means.
Absolutely not, and it is so technical and sophisticated. It's, it requires an engineer, quite honestly, and we are so fortunate, Joe Fahy and what he does in the Auburn community.
I agree, thank you, Joe.
Yes, absolutely.
No retirement letters from him, not allowed.
And moving along.
So in your packet, I know there's quite a lot to read, but I want to shout out and give credit to those people who have come on multiple afternoons, including our own Mrs. Harrington, who's part of this, and really looking under the leadership of a leadership team member at work that's ongoing. And I, I go back and thank the 140 people from across the Auburn community that pulled together in November of seventeen to share their ideas of what they believed needed to continue to happen and make sure that we're providing every opportunity available for our students. So this is a brief update. After sharing it with you, we will post it on the website, and I encourage individuals to read it. It's our commitment to make sure that we're open and transparent with this as well. But lots of great work taking place already.
Agreed.
The, so as I had mentioned to you a moment ago, the public hearing on the budget, we had initially said it would be on March 20th. It is my recommendation we move it to April 3rd. The only potential glitch with that, and I know we've never had the need for it being at Auburn High School based on small numbers that come, that may interfere with their tech week prior to the, the spring play. So if that's the case, then I will get back to you at the next meeting. So if that's the case, and I will get back to you at the next meeting, it may mean that we have the public hearing here, which I think we would send the same letters to town meeting members, we'd just notify them here. I don't see it as an issue, but I wanted to share that, share that with you.
Okay, if we had a mob come, couldn't we move to the middle school?
We could.
Yes.
We absolutely could. Oh, we could, through the chair, even plant it at the middle school if that's easier and just have it there and ready.
If the past is any kind of a.
Yeah, I get it.
We could probably have it in that broom closet.
Yeah, I think I got it last year, too.
Okay, and moving on to teaching and learning. Are we going to, do I think we're teaching and learning?
Yeah, it does. Just need a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. I would entertain that motion.
Make a motion to move the public hearing on FY 2020 draft budget from March 20th to April 3rd, 2019.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote.
And one addition through the chair, if I may, I left at your seats a letter from Dr. Lozay, our assistant superintendent, and wanted me to share. She shared it with the leadership team this afternoon that after a forty-year career in the Auburn Public Schools, she has made a decision to retire this June. So as she said in here, she loves this district, she's, it's been like watching a child grow. There's always challenges, but without question, extremely satisfying. So she wanted to be sure to thank all of you as well. You will see her at an upcoming meeting, but she will be sorely missed, not only by the leadership team, but certainly me personally, too. So I wish her the best. But she will be here through June, and as she said, and I, we were joking earlier today, I said, you will work every day between now and June.
That's big news.
It is big news. I was shocked when I saw this.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, she's leaving really big shoes to fill. She's just a pleasure to work with, so we were lucky to have her.
Agreed.
Very lucky.
Happy for her. Congratulations to her on being able to make that decision.
I'll teach her how to sleep late in the morning.
Well, through the chair, I'm actually going to be away a couple of days towards the end of next week, so I told her I would promise showing her how to make a snow call. So she will get to do that before she retires. She can have a sleepless night.
And I did skip ahead just a bit. We may want to just go over the upcoming events quickly.
Yes, so just to share, we've got the Try Two concerts that are upcoming. Ryan had reported about some of the Model UN taking place, and it's hard to believe that, as I see it on here, it's a sure sign that spring is coming soon. The community reading days are just around the corner, so lots of good things happening.
Great. And now, teaching and learning.
So just wanted to share with you a brief update. The learning walks continue to go well. We have now been to each of our schools. We will soon be going to each of the schools for a second round, but it really is just a really professionally invigorating process. I absolutely love it, and we learn a lot, and as a leadership team, the discussions that we have afterwards comparing what we saw and what we, you know, thought to be really engaging, we're focusing on student engagement activities that we saw, I think helps all of them particularly as they evaluate their teachers. So we want to make sure we're holding everyone to the same high bar. So it's been good, it's been good. The ESPOR, and I will not be able to tell you, it's a brief survey that they do with our middle school and high school students, really trying to do like a prescreener for potential for any substance abuse issues and such. So middle school has completed theirs, the high school will soon complete theirs, a little bit later, I think it's in early April they're going to be doing that, but they continue to do well. And Dr. Lozay, actually, at the next meeting, will provide some data around the middle school information that was collected. The Project Lead The Way, I'm happy to report that Mrs. Sarah Cannell, the media specialist at Swiss, she worked, and I know we had Ms. Labretton from Bryn Mawr and Packerchild work together on Project Lead The Way, receiving a $25,000 grant, and it really focuses on computer science, engineering, and biomedical science. So it's a great opportunity. They've gone to a few trainings, and Dr. Lozay will report some more at the next meeting, but very exciting taking place. So with your approval, I will probably leave the next two items to table those to the next meeting, neither is of a time-sensitive nature, and Dr. Lozay will report on March 6th.
Sure.
Sounds great. And on to business and financial.
Yes, so the year-to-date budget report is in your packet. Mrs. Worsbicky, Dr. Lozay, and I continue to meet regularly with this. We are in very good shape. We'll be looking at comparing it from last year. The big difference is, if you remember, we were able to put $324,000 into that special ed stabilization fund. So while we're hopeful that we may have a nominal amount to put in this year, it certainly won't be at that value, but we knew that going in because those are, were some expenses that didn't come to fruition, which was good for the district and town. I would ask for your support of the transfers that are noted in your packet.
I would entertain that motion.
Make a motion to approve the transfers between the series as provided by the business manager.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote.
The year-end audit report in your packet, you see, they came here and spent a few days looking over the documents in great detail. Mrs. Worsbicky and I met to go over this. There were some minor findings that needed to be updated, but as you saw, if you read through this, that actually, Mrs. Worsbicky has already made any of the necessary corrections, so pleased to share that we are in good shape with that as well. What I would ask for your vote on in order to get this to the town in time for it to be submitted on the warrant, we have before you seven warrant articles for your consideration, and I will not read those to you, but Article One just quickly is about the Medicaid receipts that's similar to what we've had in the past. Article Two is the interest from the trust fund that we use for site managers. That number gets filled in closer to town meeting. Number Three, we don't yet know the value of the McKinney Vento receipts, that's for the homeless transportation. If you remember, last year, this was something that we typically took up at the fall special town meeting, and because the department gave the money out prior to the close of the fiscal year, we couldn't get access to it and it went to the town. So this is really put in here as a placeholder in case they're going to do that again. And that's been with, in communication with town hall. And the next item is, this is as we go forward so that you would be able to take this vote, assuming it got approved by town meeting, that we could have a bus contract, it would be in excess of three years, would actually be for five years. And that, we think, and we saw based on the extension we did this time, that could result in better pricing for us because they have secure knowledge that they're going to be with a district for five years rather than three. So that's one that we ask for your support on. The next one is regarding setting up a revolving account for non-resident or foster care student tuition. So there have been an incident, an instance recently where we had actually some room in one of our special education programs up at the high school, and a neighboring district did not have a program, and they were willing to pay us tuition to have them come. Now, just like with school choice, it would always be, you know, the Auburn students would come first, only if there was room. We were not able to accept that money because we didn't have this approved, and it would have gone directly to the town. It would be something that would be used very judiciously. The other piece, too, is if we were to bring, exchange students from China or another country with this account, we'd be able to deposit them into a revolving account. So it allows the district to keep the funds that we would need. And then the final two ones are seeking approval to repurpose CIP funds. These were actually brought forward to you a couple of meetings ago, maybe in early January. So this is really, and some of them, if you remember, required town meeting approval because they were from previously approved ones. So we just want to make sure that we'll be using the money for the underground oil tank at Swanson, that's in Article Six. And Article Seven is to repurpose the funds, we'd use them for Packerchild unit events at $60,000, the multi-function school activity vehicle for $55,000, and the remaining 78 for the underground oil tank removal. So it is my recommendation that you approve those.
I would entertain that motion.
Make a motion to approve the warrant articles for the annual town meeting on May 7th as submitted.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote.
And then finally, just want to remind everyone that the plus applications are due by June 1st, and they have been out via email and will continue to, and will be sent home in hard copy as well.
It's going to work this time.
It is going to work this time.
And we now move on to policies.
So included in your packet are a number of policies, several that have no changes at all, and others that have some minor changes. We've gone through and reviewed these, and it is my recommendation that you approve them as noted.
I would entertain that motion.
Make a motion to approve the above-named policies as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote. And we do need an executive session?
We do, yes.
I would entertain that motion.
I'll make a motion to have, for executive session, as per Mass General Law, Chapter Thirty, Section Twenty-One, A2, to conduct strategies for negotiations with union and non-union personnel.
Do I have a second?
Second.
We'll call vote.
Dr. McCrillis?
Yes.
Mrs. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mrs. Hallway?
Yes.
Mrs. Harrington?
Yes.
And Mr. Scobie?
Yes.